Okay, now you want to call to order Shay? Now that we're recording.
Okay, yes, calling the meeting to order. Sorry for the background noise. I am Adela Trossfield. It is 7:06 by my clock.
Yep, thank you. Do you want me to help you kind of read through the agenda?
Yeah, I'm blind with the agenda at the moment. I need about 10 more minutes and then I'll be fully with you guys.
Karen, can you just go on mute, please?
Yep.
No, not you, Karen.
Okay, so Shaleen, the first item we've got is any citizens comments.
All right. Do we have any citizen's comments from the? It does not look like we have anybody on the meeting.
There's Karen for Tri-Town Trail. They have.
Is that on the agenda?
Any comments? Yeah, there's under three.
So we can leave that for that, then that agenda item.
Right. So then we have reviewing approval of fire minutes.
So did everybody get a chance to look at them? I did. I am happy to motion to approve.
And actually, you can't motion if you're running the meeting, so I'll motion for you and I just have a second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, director's report, Scott?
So we started all our spring field work. Paul's been edging, leveling in fields, building up mounds, putting up all the temporary fencing, getting the goals out, all that. I actually talked to Mike today. We're getting raining, I think, Thursday, Friday, so he's going to let the fields dry a little Saturday. His plan is to roll them on Sunday. And then I think end of April or early May, we'll have our first application, either like the herbicide, I believe, that it'll put down and fertilizer applications as well. All the porta potties have been delivered in time for the first week of the youth league starting. Our old company was bought out by a new company. And that's kind of later on the agenda, I'll go more into it, but they, there was a price change with that as well. Judge Crandall, the, we had the overhead door company come out because the right door wasn't closing all the way and also isn't opening. That was a problem with the, when we're trying to install the water line. So I believe it's a broken spring. I'm just waiting on an estimate from them for, they had to look and find the specific part and then they're going to give us a quote for labor and the part to fix it. Christie Hill, it, the parking lot did look great. They did a fantastic job until last night. Actually, somebody did donuts in the parking lot. So that's, of course, we can't have nice things as soon as we put something new in and somebody destroyed it. But I believe, I think the police might have an idea who it is, but I'll let you guys know next meeting if they're able to catch the person that did it. Luckily, it's Millings, so it should be, we should be able to fix it fairly easy. Can be raped back, re-leveled and all that. And Millings, the town has plenty of, whenever they take up a road, they get more of them. Colonel Ledger Park, Russell's been very busy. Hey, Karen, can you just go on mute? Karen, Keith? He is, all right, stop talking. He's created a new entrance into the hiking trail at Colonel Ledger Park. It's like an old logging road that he found and him and Paul actually today, I think they had too much fun because they had the machines down already. They moved the rocks off the rock wall and just cut a clear path. It's right at the back of the pavilion. And then Russell wants to move the sign as well because we're doing the hike ledger program. There's a lot of people have been having trouble finding the trailhead behind the tennis courts. So actually, this will be a real clear entry point for the trail. Also, the Rotary, we're doing a trail race there this weekend, so they'll, actually, it'll benefit for that as well because they won't have to go down the stairs or over the drainage. Karen? I don't know how to mute people on my. So, yeah, so that'll be good for that, for the trail and then for the high ledger program as well. We had the Easter egg hunt. It was much smaller than it typically is in your past years. I think it's because of COVID and then wasn't advertised like it typically would be in the events magazine. And then we, it was kind of last minute, once the guidelines loosened up that we decided we were going to do it. And then thanks Lou, I know you helped out. We had plenty of volunteers actually from the school, which we were worried about, but didn't end up getting volunteers. The youth leagues have all started practice this week. Submitted all their field needs and then Paul's been working to get all the fields prepped, getting all the lines measured out for opening day. And basketball has started their girls league, which they plan to do in the spring. So they're doing practices indoors and then having games outdoors on Blonders basketball courts on Saturdays. We're also working on doing movie nights. We got a really good price. And we're actually trying to team up with the library to save some money because the library actually has the movie license, which would allow us to show the movies in public. And they're actually willing to contribute. They're asking the friends of the library to see if they'll pay for one of the movies. So it'd be $250 per showing. If we do four, we'll get the fifth one free. And we're planning to do that right on the green. I mean, we received a $500 donation, which we're thinking would be a good use towards the movies. That will cover a good majority of it. And then if the library does one movie, we'd only have to cover one movie, which we should be able to do out of the budget with some of the events that got canceled this year. But still working on, you know, finalizing all that and, you know, seeing if the library is able to come through. And plus, there's issues with if the movie's on the library property versus off the property. Or I'm trying to bend the rules a little bit. If we project it from the library property into the town green, if we're covered, or if it's considered the same parcel because it's the same, or the same owner. I'm still looking into all that, but hopefully we'll be able to use their license. If not, I think our backup plan is just to hold the movie in their parking lot, which would be our, you know, first plan. But if need be, that'll be our backup. Summer camp, we're currently taking applications. We're actually receiving quite a lot of them. And we've been planning for, you know, how we're going to operate this summer. It's going to be a little different because no field trips. So we're going to probably do more in-house activities. Also, I've talked to the superintendent. I think he wants to try to partner up too and possibly bring some teachers in. I gotta still talk to him about that because I think he wants to minimize some of the learning loss that the kids might have experienced due to pandemic. And then possibly work with the library to do like summer reading and things like that. They're having, everybody's having difficulty reaching some of the kids with the pandemic, so it might be a way to, you know, minimize some of that learning loss and get some of that, you know, summer reading information out to all the kids. What I have right now, that's everything. The director's report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Real quick, I don't know if I'm looking at this right, but it looks like director's report that's included in the agenda, is that the current one? Because it looks like it's the same as it was last month.
Yeah, Scott, it looks like the wrong one linked. It looks like it's got the right date, but the information is from last month.
Oh, okay. Well, I read the correct one. I'm sorry that you guys didn't receive it.
I think we can approve what was presented red and then if you just update it, I think that'll be okay.
Yeah. All right, yeah, I'll have to see what happens with that because it might have been, she's, she might have uploaded it before I saved it. Because I'll go in and immediately save it as the next month, so I don't accidentally save over March. But I'll double check that and make sure we'll get the correct one up.
So Scott, how do we do that? Can we motion to approve the revised version that was read?
We can approve. I'll make a motion to approve the report as read.
Yeah.
And then, um, I saw, I think I saw the red a second. Was that what you were doing? Perfect.
Yeah.
And I can send you the actual one, Lou, for the minutes. That way, if you want to just copy and paste it in. So we'll have it on the actual, the minutes itself.
Okay, that'd be good.
Well, I'm hoping the rest of the stuff is correct.
I like the road.
So we have, we have the motion. Do we need to vote?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
So old business, Scott?
All right, so I have, hopefully that got attached. I made some changes to the policies based on kind of what we talked last time and then talking with Monica and Fran as well. I took a lot of language directly from the ordinances. So the changes should be in red. So like under fires, I know actually Ken's trying to set something up to have a fire. So he was probably pushing for this, but he's not here. I put all open fires, including campfires are prohibited at recreational facilities unless approved by the director or Parks and Recreation Commission. And also, I would check with the fire marshal just to make sure there's no, you know, burn warnings or any advisories like that would prevent that we shouldn't have fires and wanting to light the park on fire. Like with all the wind lately, I know there's been advisories in effect. For pets, I just edited that to kind of follow the ordinance a little better that was just put out. So I added, you know, for leash no longer than 10 feet. With the exception of athletic fields, playgrounds, basketball, tennis courts, or in bathing areas. The other, and then just referred to the ordinance underneath it. And then for the alcohol ordinance, it's probably the big, the major changes because that's one of the big things that that ordinance is added pretty much every single location. I put the possession, consumption, sale, or purchase of alcohol liquor as defined in CGS 30-1 is prohibited on all recreational facilities and athletic facilities. Unless you have written approval with the director or his slash her designate and approved state of Connecticut liquor permit. Written authorization must be obtained at least 30 days prior to the start of the event. Please refer to ordinance. I changed the ordinance, I'm ready to correct the new ordinance. And I also attached, I don't have them with me, but the, some information that the chief had sent over. He sent the instructions on how to obtain the Connecticut liquor license. And then the actual permit itself. So it is quite a process. I know we were worried about how we'd know if it's completed or not, which they actually have to put it on file with the clerk to, for it to officially be finalized. So there would, it would be on records of the town. Once it's completed, we would, so I'd be able to know then that, you know, it's, it's been through the whole entire process. I'm actually, I talked to Kyle today because I think it's a good idea. He didn't really know that if, like I had approved it or not. So I'm going to, I think going forward, forward him my letter that I write to them, just so he knows that he can actually sign off on them because that's the planning and zoning, I believe, is one of the first stops. So he'll, that way, if I had to send it to him, he'll know that he can sign. And if he hasn't received it from him, he'll hold off and make sure they get, you know, that, that letter from us saying that it's okay if they're bad.
I was gonna say, no questions for me, Scott.
We need to vote for, for the policies or to?
I think we have to vote on the changes that Scott made, yes, right?
Yeah, if there's no further, if he doesn't want anything else, you know, changed, and then it would be, we kick it back, change it and bring it back again next meeting.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to accept the, to update the policies as presented.
I have a question. I just have a question. So this is all town properties or just properties that are kind of governed by parks and recs?
So are these policies are for parks and rec? Like some of the ordinances, those are, they were made by the council and for all properties, like the alcohol ordinance and like the dog leash ordinance, but we're updating our park and rec policies just to be in line with the new ordinances that they put in place.
Okay, the only reason I was asking is because I know periodically the farmer's market will have a vendor in there that sells bottles of wine or cider or, and I didn't know if that was part of this.
Right, I mean.
Right, but it's, the reason I'm, the only reason I'm asking is because it says consumption, sale, or purchase of alcohol liquor.
Yeah, you're right, it does, okay.
So the way it's written, that's the only reason I'm saying anything is because I've seen it before, I mean, I've went and purchased hard liquor or not, or hard cider at the farmer's market before. So that's why I'm asking.
So going forward, they will have to get my permission because I actually attended the meeting and they had it worded that for the property, for the town green property that's under park and rec jurisdiction, that they could get farmer's market approval or park and rec approval. So I actually spoke at the meeting and said, I, I don't feel comfortable with, you know, somebody else being able to give permission on property that's our liability.
Right.
So actually, I think one of the councilor, Dombrowski changed, I think they, they changed it in the ordinance. So now it, for that property, it's just listed parks and rec commission or director or designate can give permission for sale, consumption, exactly whatever I said in the, the policies. So they'd have to come to us now first, like, or get written letter from me to get that permit for that at the farmer's market now.
And they would have to do the whole permit aspect of it. Okay, I was just, I was just wanting to make, because I just didn't want to.
Yeah, because I was, I asked, do they need, do they need the farmer's market and our permission? Or just can the farmer's market give anybody permission or only at the farmer's market? And they thought it was easier just to keep, you know, get permission from parks and rec.
Right.
As being, you know.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Have the jurisdiction over the pavilion.
In that case, would the farmer's market get like a blanket permit? Or does each vendor, like if somebody signed up, like who, the, I'm trying to remember, the three got, no, the, there was a brewery that came two summers ago and had growlers. Like, would they have to get individual permits or would the farmer's market get the permit for every Wednesday that, for all their?
I believe it'd be by, it's by vendors. So the farmer's market, I don't think wants to hold the liability. So they make the vendor get the alcohol permit. A lot of those vendors already have an alcohol permit to sell at multiple locations. So actually, it's much easier for them. They would essentially just need written approval from like myself or the commission because they would already have the liquor permit to operate on site. They wouldn't have to go through the whole process for, like, say someone's having a wedding. That's a one-day event. Like, a lot of those companies have a, like a blanket liquor license to operate on any, basically any property, or they add a property to the list rather than have to go through the entire process again.
All right, that makes sense.
Make a motion to accept the changes?
We've already made the motion. We just need to vote then because now we've had discussions, so, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business.
So first thing is review and then motion to approve the summer camp fee change for this year's summer camp. So as everybody knows, the minimum wage has been going up. This year was a tricky one. I did a lot of math because it goes up twice. So, well, there's the current change and then August 1st is, it goes up again. So the last week of summer camp, people will be getting a raise. We already approved the pay scale. So now we have an idea. We hit the deadline of when all the returning staff had to hand in that letter, it's saying that they're coming back. So we know how many returning staff versus new staff. I was able to do the, you know, the payroll numbers for the year. So we're looking at about $93,100 for summer camp staff for payroll. And then because we're not doing field trips, I think last year it was like 3,000, 3,000, like 2,000 for in-house activities and then like lunches, we decided to go with 5,000 per camp. So we could do more in-house activities for them, you know, something every week because there won't be any field trips each week. So we wanted to give the kids something to do at camp, you know, exciting each week. So we raised that up a little bit. And then I like factored in some credit card fees. We did change, like, there's no, like, if you do all six weeks, there's no deal anywhere. It's just a strict $125 per week per kid, which keeps it simple for us for budgeting purposes. And then, because the minimum wage is going to go up again next year. So we're able to put it to 125 from $100. And we were a little worried about COVID, so we think we can accomplish that because we need 146 kids each week to break even. In the past, we, we've had about, you know, a little more than that, but we also factored into, we shrunk the age for, I think it used to be a 10 to 15-year-olds. We saw a lot of issues and there wasn't very many 14, 15-year-olds, but the four or five that showed up caused a lot of trouble. So we eliminated the 14 and 15-year-old age group. So it's 10 to 13 now for the super kernels. So like, we're, should average, in a good year, we're averaging like 50, like 65 and then like 55. So we underestimated a little bit just to, in case we don't get a good turnout with COVID, we want to make sure we break even. Still, so we're thinking we can, we'll definitely get at least 146 kids each week. And should be able to get, bring in, I think it's a total of $109,500 we would need to break even for camp. And then it'd just be a $125 price increase. So it's not a huge increase like we're expecting initially.
And we still have the fact that we had held that one, right? So it's kind of, it's not huge, Scott, but it's, I don't see any other way around it, really.
Yeah, because really it's a, last year's increase plus this year's increase plus the August increase that we're going to see. So next year, we, it'll be probably a minimal increase and I believe that's the last, either that or it's one more year after, but that's like the last pay raise after for the current minimum wage hike that they did over the, I think it's like a five-year span.
So do we have a motion to approve the pay increase as signed by Scott?
So moved. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any? Any other new business?
Oh, yep. So next I have just an update on the budget. So I kind of talked a little bit in the director's report. I was able to go to the finance committee and get an increase approved from them. So our company that provides our porta potties, which was $45 a porta potty, was honoring that price. They bought out the old company and it's, the new company honored it at the end of last year until apparently we took the units away. And then this year, when we got our first bill, luckily it was just Russell's house to start. So I was able to kind of get, you know, the approval process going. It jumped from $45 a porta potty to $61.10 a porta potty, which ends up being $2,126 extra a year. So I was able to go to the finance committee last minute before they approved the budget to go to town council. And they were able to grant that increase. So it brings our repairs and maintenance line from $29,900 to $32,000, or $32,026, which accounts for the $2,126 increase. We received multiple quotes and actually the company that bought out our other company had the lowest price. I talked to the mayor about it. We'll probably maybe go out to bid next year, but at this point, we received enough quotes and it's probably not the best time to go out to bid. We think the price is so high due to COVID. There's all kinds of sanitation fees and hand sanitizer fees that they're adding in with it. So we think it's probably best to go out to bid after the pandemic and maybe we'll get a better price then. But I mean, a lot of companies we talked to, they even said, they just straight up said, no, like, they wouldn't even give us a quote. They said, we don't have any porta potties. One company was getting like 100 new ones delivered, but they're all already accounted for. I think due to all the outdoor events, everybody's doing things outside of the pandemics and the porta potties are getting a lot more use. So it, there was actually a good price, the 6110. I didn't, we didn't have anything under $100 besides this company.
Did you try affordable portables?
The leaves are they Norwich or or Stonington?
They're around here somewhere. They're who we used, well, we've used in the past, we've used them for the fair. And they're very clean as well.
I can look. I mean, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, if we can find a cheaper price, that's great. I think the, also the issue is we were requesting 20 porta potties and that's quite a significant number for a lot of the companies right now. Or a wolf for them. But we can, I mean, we can still always get quotes. We're not in a contract with the current company, which is nice. So if we find anything cheaper, we can always move on to somebody else. Which is fine by me because they've been a little difficult since the merger.
Yeah.
So that's basically it. Other than that, the budget's intact and should be going with town council and then it's going to public hearing. So we should be in good shape for next year.
We don't need to motion on that, that, do we, at this point?
No, that was just, just an update. Already motioned and yeah, I was able to make the last, it's kind of like an emergency change to the finance committee, which actually we're still under the budget that we had approved because of the cut that the finance committee had made based on history. And then the last thing, a new business is motion approved for me to submit either. Either as of right, or it might be an actual permit, I was talking to the wetlands official today. And we, there's different tiers, we might be able to do, um, a minimal impact wetlands permit. And not need to get DEP and Army Corps permitting. Um, but the type of bridge, because it's weight loading bare, uh, to get ATVs across for the fire department on the tri-town trail. Um, possibly could require a permit, but there's a lot of things I still got to look into, the mayor's out. And there's a new lease with a farmer on that property, so we got to check in to see, um, me and Kyle, if there's any. You know, thing that'll contradict in that agreement that's being made with the farmer. But, you know, just because I know that this was in the original proposal for the trail, it's just like a couple hundred feet down. I know that we agreed to have the trail going under the park and rec commission, so I want to get your permission before. Putting in a permit or asking for that as of right, it's not part of the original plan.
I don't see any issue with it, anybody?
We're good with it.
I have a motion to accept the change.
So moved. Thanks, Florida.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, anything else?
That was the last item on our agenda.
Anyone else with new items, or can we motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
Second. Let's see Barb's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
Have a good night.
Guys, night.
Good night.
Yeah.
I just have, um, the. The building.